Because are they here doors a week? I know that would probably be hard too, but I think it's gonna be even harder to ask them if they're gone.
Yeah.
The weekend for them to come back because then that's another problem.
Let me, alright, you don't have to miss Thursday evening, right? But, uh, Brian, miss Thursday evening with you? Alright, miss Dicky, so I mean.
As soon as we could post is right now.
Alright, so, thank you.
I mean, for it to work on Thursday night, it didn't have to be eight o'clock Thursday night.
Did you get that council, we're talking Thursday, eight o'clock, the seventy-two hours.
I mean, but we have to do, we have to do students moving in Thursday, so it's like, it's gonna keep in on more issues.
So Thursday, Thursday evening, if they're moving in Thursday, then Thursday evening is too late. We can, if, if, if the issue pertains to the safety and well-being of people, we can have a twenty-four hour emergency meeting, so we can have a meeting on, on tomorrow, we have one on Wednesday, but we just have to give twenty-four hour notice because we're speaking to the safety and the livelihood of people.
Alright, so. Uh, B.
Now, if we do it for tomorrow, it may be too short a notice for Chris Haver, Wednesday.
Alright.
What's the motion?
Uh.
A lot of discussion.
Okay, so I move that Wednesday, uh, that the mayor will, Chris, uh, Christopher Haver personally, as well as bring.
How about Mr. Barto?
Uh, as well as.
Chief.
Chief, Chief Barto. As well as.
The agenda item.
The agenda item that is listed. Items on occupancy, inspections, building permits, and reports on any other related issues on the Panther Hill apartment complex at six o'clock.
Six P.M. Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded and, uh, that a special.
Emergency.
Emergency meeting.
Emergency meeting be held at six P.M. on this coming Wednesday to discuss occupancy, inspections, building permits, and reports on any other related issues on the Panther Hill apartment complex, and to invite, uh, Mr. Herschel Lee and Mr. Chris Haver, Bureau Veritas inspectors.
We could also invite the owners who care to do if they want to come, that's up to them, we'll be inviting. But my unreadiness is that, I, I don't want us to take this lightly.
Hold on, hold on, I made the, I read the motion, now we gotta use it second.
I second it.
Okay, uh, discussion, go ahead.
My unreadiness is that, this is a, we have been dragging our feet in this issue for some time. Uh, the documents that we currently have, that official documents from the company that we pay, says that this has not, that this has failed. And I'm simply asking that we, that, that, that there's been incidents where it's been an emergency, where there was a fire alarm that went off and other things that has happened, and we treat this as the emergency, uh, as it is, and we not just say that this is just a, like something that we can put off. And so, um, there's several things that have happened that we've had, that citizens have talked about, not just this meeting, it's been on the news, and, and so, a number of things are going on. So we need to make sure that we, uh, that our attorney understands the severity of us having this meeting in the next twenty-four hours in reference to this development that we have a temporary C.O. on, and we have a lot of people moving in into apartments that aren't done.
And also, uh, I think we all need to understand too that the things and the accusations that's being made by the people that are inspecting these buildings need to be true and not false, because I don't want us to run into treating this business like you're treating them, and then they end up suing us in some aspect or another because we're going off of false reports. So I wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that Chris Haver is reporting what is accurate, because we're running into these people's business, we're running into these people's livelihood, and I'm not gonna sit up here and be sued because somebody's saying one thing, but then they doing something else totally different. Because this company can pack up and leave, and we'll have a big old mess out there with a whole bunch of unfamed buildings, and nobody can occupy them, nobody can manage them, nobody do anything. So we gotta make sure that what we're accusing them of is accurate and solid. You can't go at them based off of what Chris Haver's saying, because I don't know if I even put that much trust in him. Because he says one thing verbally, and then he puts something else on paper. And then it really bothers me when he gave me the okay to do the occupancy on that August the third, and then he turns around and send out an email on the tenth talking about how dangerous the building is, that many days later. So I have issues with that.
Councilor John.
Councilman Wendy Williams, you are totally one hundred percent correct, but our ears also have to perk up when our own city engineer resign, our city attorney resign. Several things have happened throughout the project that leaves us to wonder what to do. So that's why going forward, that we really need to make sure in our hiring process this next time, that we have someone that we can trust, someone that is loyal to us, and someone that we can rely upon, so that way we don't keep running into.
But also, Councilman John, I respect what you're saying, but our city engineer ain't been about since we had. So this project ain't got nothing to do with him being sorry, he's just sorry.
Alright, Councilor Randall.
Just real quick, uh, to, uh, Councilman Williams, uh, we, we, the development can't sue us for, for, uh, first of all, I think what we're doing now is doing due diligence. What we, what we tried to do at least in the last couple of weeks to ask amongst us is us doing our due diligence to this issue. But the, the development can't sue us for going off, well, everything that we're doing is going off of the one piece of solid documentation that we have about the development. So if, if they were to go after anybody, it would go after Bureau Veritas, because all we're doing is going off of information presented to us. And it's been three weeks since they presented that information, and we've been told that as soon as, as soon as he left on the third, he, he passed the development, and then eight days later, he sent the, the failure. And so, we're trying, we definitely need Chris Haver here to, to explain to us why, if, if he's overturned what his written report says, why we haven't received a subsequent report after that saying that the development's passed. And, uh, you know, Chief, Chief Barto being here, I mean, it's a, he, there's the fireside, then there's the building side. He, I think he's done his job on the fireside, he, we, we don't, I don't really have any questions for him, because I know he's done his job on the fireside. All of the issues that are coming up about the structure, about the plumbing. So really, it's, it's Chris Haver, it's, who was it, Lee? And it, and then, you know, Councilman Roland said, you know, we could invite the, the developers. I think we should invite them, whether they show up or not, it's on them, but I definitely think they need to be added to the list of people we sent invitations to. And because at the end of the day, people, people have questions for them too. And so, you know, if, if, if there's nothing to hide, they shouldn't have the issues showing up.
Man, I agree with you, Councilor Randall, I agree with everything that everybody's saying. All I'm saying is, you, you, you say one thing, eight days later in the report, you put something else. All I'm saying is, if it was that important, and you are still going out there for proven buildings for students to move into. So if one ain't safe, ain't none of them safe, because they all made out of the same stuff. So that's all I'm saying is, if you're gonna do it, do it correct.
Hold on, I've got, I've got an unreadiness. Uh, plumbing was mentioned, and I'm looking at three different building numbers, six-three, five-five, six-six, just the project number numbers. And on all three of them, uh, Dee Rogers, because Mr. Haver is not plumbing certified, she passed all plumbing. So plumbing's not an issue to a safety standpoint.
I wouldn't refer to the inspection, I'm referring to people who live there and say the port is not for that.
Call for the previous question.
Well, I'm not finished with my unreadiness.
Well, I can call for the previous question, that's our previous question.
But you can, you can go ahead, and then I'll finish mine after. Go ahead, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, four buildings were passed and inspected, no?
Two, four.
Six or seven, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Those inspectors were approved to come out by Mr. Greg Hallmark. Chris Haver was off on Thursday and Friday, Ms. Rogers came through a little bit on Thursday, and then she had to go to Austin. So, Mr. Hallmark is who all of these people report to. I don't remember the two gentlemen that came out. Uh, one came from San Antonio, and I think the other came from Austin or something. Or no, one came from Houston, and one came from Austin. So Bureau Veritas, who we rely on, has been inspecting and certifying these buildings. We'll see what we can do to get what you all asked, but I'm gonna tell you now, the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna have to certify that under state law, this warrants, because ours is just conversation, that this warrants and falls under the Emergency Meetings Act. If not, we won't be able to post it by law. So I'll check with council and find that stuff out. Uh, otherwise, we'll post it and go forward. But again, I just wanna make sure that the public sees a fully complete document, and everything is passing, and what Councilman Roland is referring to has a failed up here, which means it's an incomplete document. They took a lot of stuff, so you got a, a partial situation, but that's not a problem. Uh, since Mr. Haver has been continuing to inspect buildings, when I spoke with him Wednesday, he was finalizing reports for the buildings that you're referring to, so we'll look to get that from him.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, could you please not forget to request them for that Wednesday evening?
Miss Dicky? Uh, remind me of that after I confirm that we can by law have that meeting on Wednesday. Once we, once it falls under the Emergency Meeting Act, because, and the reason for that, this is state law. The reason for that is the public's right to know usually requires, as councilor suggested, that we post a meeting with seventy-two hours' notice, so everyone has a right to know. So if there's an exigent circumstances warranting emergency, we'll have the meeting on Wednesday, we'll see if these gentlemen can come. Next item on the agenda, gentlemen and ladies.
Uh, I want to make some reports.
Uh, council reports. Councilman Roland.
I'll, I'll be brief. Uh, citizens, uh, friends, neighbors, potential, uh, business people. It's a pleasure to serve in the City of Prairie View. Um, I want us to acknowledge the passing of Reverend Brandon, uh, who was a citizen here in the citizen, in the City of Prairie View. Um, so for those who don't know, his funeral, I think his funeral's tomorrow. Um, also, if you know of any educator in the City of Prairie, in Prairie View or Hempstead area, the Prairie View Chamber of Commerce has, uh, we created something called the Educators Toolkit. Um, sponsors have been Alpha Phi Alphas, Fraternity Incorporated, the Prairie View Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, some other local businesses in the City of Prairie View. Uh, we're ramping up our Educators Toolkit, so if you're an educator, please let us know. We have toolkits that we give, instead of giving away things to the, the student, we give things to the, toolkits to the educators, who, because if, when the students don't have it, the educator's the one who steps up. And so we've, the Chamber of Commerce and the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated has been doing this for the last three years. And so we'll be making sure that we get all educators in the, in the city a toolkit, specifically, uh, Councilor Randall. Uh, Texas Association of Black City Council members, we had an opportunity, the City of Prairie View hosted them this last Saturday here in the City of Prairie View. Um, it, it was about eight years, well, I had looked at it, uh, well, no, four years ago, and then eight years ago, actually, um, they came to Prairie View. Um, the Association, this year gave away twenty-five thousand dollars in scholarships. We have three students who come into Prairie View who've received those scholarships, and, uh, because we go to all the HBCUs around the state, and we also leave a little love offering to Prairie View and University on the behalf of the Texas Black City Council members, where I think at least half of us are, are, are members of that organization. Um, we also had an opportunity to talk, uh, had opportunity to participate with, uh, thank you, Chief, and, uh, the mayor, myself and the mayor, we had, we participated in an active shooter training with TEACs, Extension Energy. Um, so thank you for inviting me, it was a learning experience and a worthwhile experience that we spent all day last Friday on campus getting trained. Um, and then, Ms. Bennett, um, you, you asked, you talked about Wyatt Chapel. I think, uh, we have on the agenda September tenth to, uh, to talk about the interlocal agreement. And I think once we get the interlocal agreement signed, uh, we'll then be able to go back and forth with Waller County on, on what should be cut and what should be taken care of. Um, don't forget, uh, uh, August thirtieth, which is this Thursday, the Prairie View Chamber of Commerce meets at twelve o'clock. Thank you again.
Thank you, uh, as always, it is a pleasure to serve. Uh, I gave my, my report in the last meeting, but just to highlight some, some things, as you know, well, as Councilman Roland has expressed, I am an educator at Waller High School, we did start school today. So I ask you to just continue to support our, our young people. Um, last week, we had our community parent rally, where we acknowledged all of our student organizations from Little League to, you know, high school choir, and, um, it's always, there's a fireworks show, it's always a great, a great, um, experience. Even though I teach P.E., I am gonna accept his, uh, his, his package, and then I'm going to distribute it to the, to the teachers that may need it within my school. But, uh, I think it's important for our young people to see you all, because everybody in this room has accomplished some level of success, and it's encouraging for them to see people who have, who have, who look like them, who have experienced things that they've experienced, that provide them with a little bit of encouragement that they need to go through the struggles that they go through every day. So, uh, yeah, if you're looking to mentor or anything of that nature, uh, we always need young people, we always need older people. We need, we need people to speak into the lives of our children, so, uh, thank you all, God bless.
Councilor John.
Alright. Uh, once again, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve. Um, last meeting, Dr. Brown had questions upon my report. I'm gonna read the email to you today, tomorrow, I'll bring out several prints to leave at the front desk, as well as to drop by your house. So, uh, what he said was.
Can I cook?
Oh, you gonna cook? I'll bet, I'll take your print offer as well. In regards to your recent communications with Texas dot employee, Mr. Grady Maps, pertaining to dust emissions, based on information collected from a recent investigation, it has been determined that our main lane industries, construction activities, were conducted in accordance within our normal operating parameters. Although it is normal to have some dust emissions, we do not believe that the dust emissions at the subject site, job site, were significantly, significantly different when compared to our other job sites. That's because we do not have a history of nearby residents or businesses complaining of dust emissions from our operations. We do not believe that we have a responsibility to provide reimbursement for the receipts that were submitted to us, however, and identical to how we manage our other job sites. It would be our objective to continue minimizing dust emissions at this project. Um, as well, as tomorrow at the front desk, uh, why, we'll have listed, and I would like for citizens to be a part of the beautification, uh, committee, uh, so I'm asking you guys to please jump on board, and then I'll be, when you send me an email, I'll send you an email back, uh, booking the date, so we can hold a meeting and see things in which the citizens, uh, wanna see done around the community to beautify, uh, as well as the youth council. Uh, we also wanna have youth council volunteers, as well as, uh, I'll provide a packet, uh, just in case you know of any youth between the ages of fourteen and eighteen that should like to be a part of this initiative, as well as, sorry if my voice a little lengthy today. Uh, as well as, uh, with Mr. Mohammed's mission earlier, the Community Watch Program, but me loving our auntie up here, Councilman Williams, uh, she gave me some additional information that I feel like, uh, would help, I'll be in Mr. Mohammed, uh, some things that Chief Solomon has already been doing, uh, when in efforts to promote the safety and well-being of the City of Prairie View, um, in partnership with the Panther Party are seeking to build a community watch program. We're looking for a handful of citizens and community members to help in this initiative. I volunteer to be area coordinators, uh, as well as tomorrow at the front desk, it will be, uh, we had made a map and sectioned off different communities, asking for, uh, community members, uh, to take the lead, and Roland and the area coordinators of residents of seven, uh, respective sections of the city, and my number, as well as Mr. Mohammed's number, as well as my email, his email will be listed at the bottom. So I have a lot of things provided for you all at the front desk tomorrow. Once again, thank you, uh, for sticking with us, young people, and always a grateful opportunity to serve.
Good afternoon, thank everyone for coming out. Um, the first thing is, Dr. Finley, I wanna let the mayor and council know, he's ready to meet with me concerning our wastewater bill with the university. And that meeting, um, will be scheduled for next week, and will be sometime, uh, after five P.M. here at City Hall. Also, I spoke with Ms. Casper, who is the Community Environment Planning for HGC, and I had asked her previously about coming to the city to speak with us and the residents about vows, acquisitions, elevations, and so forth. She was willing to, which I am just waiting for her to get back with me. I asked her for three dates, times, um, that she would be able to make, so as soon as I get that information, I will let you know.
Uh, good evening, citizens. Uh, so, uh, last week, uh, a couple meetings back, I was appointed to the flooding committee, so I have been, uh, driving around with Mr. Glover. Uh, we pinpoint a lot of, of issues with drainage, and one thing about flooding is that you, what typically happens is you have to prevent it before it happens. And a lot of times, flooding will happen, and then, you know, you see the issue, but then you don't do anything after it. So with the flooding committee, and I've already talked to some of the citizens in here about specific areas in the city, uh, my goal is to take those areas, document it, give it to the city council, give it to the mayor, uh, just so we can be aware, and we can start actually making moves to move forward and, you know, protect the city from flooding for, you know, hypothetical cases in the future. Uh, next, I was with Prairie View Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we are continually working to help the city in terms of economic development, uh, holding businesses to higher standard. I know, uh, at the next meeting, uh, we're gonna be talking about having a couple networking events, um, and, uh, trying to get businesses to be members, so that way, uh, the Prairie View Chamber of Commerce can, can act on behalf of the businesses, so that they can help the city and also the citizens that are within Prairie View Chamber of Commerce. Uh, as Councilman Roland mentioned, oh, Councilman, Councilmember Roland mentioned earlier, uh, Texas Association of Black Chamber, uh, uh, Texas Association of Black Council Member, City Council Member, there we go. Yeah, so, um, it was a great pleasure being there. Uh, one thing that I've learned in this position is that I feel like everybody in this room can be better. Like, we, we are a village, you know, as elected officials, you know, if we, we wanna have more efficient meetings, we have to not just look inward, but we have to also look outwards. And so connecting with a lot of those city council members gave me a lot of perspective of, uh, of how we can run the city more efficiently, especially when it comes to allowing the citizens to have input. And I'll talk about that a little bit later, but I had a meeting, uh, with planning, planning and zoning, well, they have a meeting, but they were sitting down talking about the map, so I could tell the council that they, uh, Mr. Thompson did a great job of putting streets on the planning and zoning map, so a lot of the issue that we have with planning and zoning, uh, they should be rectified as they come up to us and present to us, and we'll make a decision on that. Uh, I'm working with our students, uh, with a project called the Abundance of Hands Ministry. Uh, it is, uh, is to connect the students, uh, the university with the citizens, um, in the city. Uh, and what, what we do is we use Abundance of Hands, which is community service to connect. So we already have two projects lined up where we're helping citizens do things that they typically wouldn't be able to do on their own, or they don't have enough help. Uh, so if you need help in any type of community service, please reach out to me, and we will try to work our best to help you out in whatever situations you have. Um, as, uh, Councilmember Randall, a couple meetings back, he made a motion to have a citizens advisory board. Uh, so I, I did a lot of research on citizens advisory, advisory boards in different cities, and me and a couple of the council members are actually working so that we can have more of the citizens' input. I feel like we can only be as efficient as if we listen to the people that we represent. Uh, so the goal is to continue to work on that, uh, so that we can have opportunities and ways for, for the citizens to have their voice be heard. Been working on pre-development processes, I know that with the issue with, uh, Panther Hills, you know, it, it seems like it's been very messy, and I feel like as a village, you know, we should operate in, in a way of efficiency just out of respect for, for the city. And so, you know, I'm continuing to try to work on, uh, presenting council different ways of processes. That way, we can just follow the process, you know, from the beginning to the end, and that way, uh, we can work together as one. And lastly, uh, as you, I, I love to hear the input from the citizens. Uh, typically, cities, you know, they have a complaint form for like the police and whatnot, but I feel like as elected officials, we should also, you know, have an opportunity to have, uh, citizen complaint forms, uh, for us, because as y'all come and watch us at the meeting, sometimes we may not notice, um, how we are operating. And so, and I feel like one of the greatest things that come out of, uh, out of citizen complaint form is accountability, and also, it gives the opportunity to, to have mediation, you know, talk to y'all. What, what do y'all see that we, that we are not doing? What are we in, what are we not listening to? That way, we continually move forward with the city side. Thank y'all once again, uh, for allowing me to serve this great city.
I just wanted to, uh, just piggyback on Councilman Wallace on the, uh, advisory board. As he stated, we, uh, it was passed by the council in the last meeting, so we're going to, we're in the process of working on the parameters of what exactly that board looks like for the City of Prairie View, and then we will be reaching out to community members about, uh, wanting to be on this, on this board. So if you know anybody who, or if you're somebody who would like to, uh, be on this board, uh, email myself or Councilman Wallace, and, um, we'll go from there. So, uh, thank you.
On the mayor's report, you've heard the block rant, and my understanding from the engineer, now the council has passed that, that work will start literally in a matter of a couple of weeks or less. So that's going to, uh, get started right away. The city's share of Hurricane Harvey funds, at least from a statewide level, comes to just over approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's what we're trying to go after, because that's what FEMA assessed our share as a city in, uh, in damages took place. Uh, there was a nice back-to-school backpacks for elementary students, our Economic Development Corps and a few local residents. They handled that right up here out of City Hall. The Highways Thirty-Six Board Meeting, which I continue to, uh, to attend, that has a lot to do with some real powerful, long-range, uh, development between Freeport coming up to two ninety around James Muse Parkway, which will have a direct impact on Prairie View. And in a, in a nutshell, what they're trying to do is tap into a lot of the cargo that goes through the Panama Canal from around the world, and instead of it going to New York or Port of Los Angeles, Long Beach, they're dredging Freeport to Freeport right now to accommodate that, because Houston Port can't handle it. The ships are too deep, and Houston doesn't go deep enough. The Waller County Transportation Plan, uh, Miss Dicky, could you give me a hand? I've got quite a few of these, so, um, councilmen and residents could see, because, uh, I know we've made mention even of Owens Road and some other streets in the city, and this gives you some of that detailed information, and we're blessed to be listed in the next zero to five-year portion of it. So they are looking to enhance quite a bit of, uh, our roads and streets in the Waller County Transportation Mobility Plan. So that's something I wanted people to have, so that you could have something in writing and, uh, further discuss and share with other residents. We are fighting, uh, that's through H.G.A.C., it's not necessarily a county thing. Um, regarding the interlocal agreements, we've been trying to get work done through the county for a couple of years, and even a few years before that, they have long since stopped doing a lot of the work in the city. So it's, and, and from the interlocal agreement standpoint, the other thing that's important is the county about a year ago voted to phase out interlocal agreements with cities in the county completely. So that's another issue where we're really gonna have to continue to, or start, where we weren't taking care of, uh, our grass and, and other issues, because the county's no longer doing it. Uh, regarding Panther Hill Apartments, I was contacted by PBA MU Administration, and about a dozen of them took a tour. and about a dozen of them took a tour of and met with the ownership over there about a week and a half ago. So the university is directly in touch with them, so much so that when some of the students, because they're rushing, as you've heard, to make sure they get it ready, but the rush, I want you to understand, they've had as many as six hundred employees a day, two, three hundred man shifts. So they're just rushing by bringing more people on to get more work done. But our inspectors and whatever are there as well. President Simmons, um, in trying to assist that and take care of her students, um, for those whose rooms weren't ready, they're making accommodations on campus until they are. That's how much those two entities are working together. Um, I was just typing on that letter that she sent out to the staff and what have you. The Prairie View Cricket Complex is also slated. For those of you that were here at the last regular meeting, they will be adding additional student housing on their project as well. So our student housing problem, which has been for well over twenty, twenty-five years, is being addressed, but that's also gonna be property improvements, increased property taxes to the city. And you also heard some about the increased revenue by having folks live in the city. The university actually had to cut off accepting new students. So it's an interesting problem to have when your growth is really that good. So they're doing a heck of a job up there. The, uh, San Bernardo Electric was one of the reasons that project was, uh, slowed down. And interestingly enough, um, in sharing this with council as well as residents, I actually got a phone call about, uh, an electric fire that they said, uh, apparently said she heard took place at the complex. And I asked her out of concern, of course, where. She stated a building that didn't even have power. I said, ma'am, can't have electric power if you don't have electricity. So that's just the rumors that unfortunately several people are promulgating online. And the sad part is, every time they stick out something that's not right, they're mentioning Prairie View in a negative light. So on one hand, we've been on the news where we didn't have enough student housing. And now that folks are investing tens of millions of dollars, we're complaining because of the process. I didn't set up the process, I just followed it. The Republic Wastes, I met with David Egler over our area, and there were a couple of areas that residents were having some issues with, and we worked through those. And there's some other things that we're doing with, uh, dumpsters and some of our larger, uh, area situations as well. Um, and that's mine for my report. Councilman Jones, did you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um, in reference to the Cricket Complex, um, their development plans are coming. Are they currently on a well? Like, are they on a well inside the city limits, or were, were they, are they on a water system?